The Monday, June 21st, 2021 City of Andalia Council Meeting is now called to order. We'll start with a moment of reflection followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, you've had an opportunity to review the study session minutes of May 3rd and the council meeting minutes of May 3rd, and also the study session minutes of May 17th and the council meeting minutes of May 17th. Are there any comments? Being none, they stand approved. Next brings us to Communications, Petitions, and Awards, and the first item is the Oath of Office for Lieutenant Brandon Suker. Mr. Went?
Yes, sir. I would just like to take this opportunity to invite our new police lieutenant, Brandon Suker, up, and I'll let Chief Oldhouse go ahead and give a little bit of an introduction on Lieutenant Suker, and then after that, we'll invite his family to come up, and you're going to have to take your badge off there, Lieutenant, so they can pin it back on you. That's an important part. We've got to know how deep it goes into your chest. So, now we'll get really serious about it as soon as the chief introduces him.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Went, and thank you, Counsel. It's a great honor tonight to introduce to you our new police lieutenant at the Vanday Division of Police. As you're well aware, Lieutenant Swafford retired at the beginning of this month, and so we have selected, after a lengthy process, we've selected a new lieutenant for that, and I'm happy to say Brandon Suker has risen to the top of that list, and we're happy to have him join our police department. Many of you may be aware of Brandon, as he's grown up here in town and lived here pretty much his whole life, graduated from Butler High School. He has prior experience working at both Trotwood Police Department and most recently Huber Heights Police Department, where he was serving as a supervisor in the patrol division there at Huber Heights. Brandon has shown just a top-notch excellence in his service there at Huber Heights, and I believe he's going to make a great addition to our team here. So, we're happy to have him here tonight and have Mr. Went administer the oath of office.
I, Brandon Suker, solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution and will obey the laws of the United States and the State of Ohio, that I will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of the City of Andalia, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Lieutenant within the Division of Police.
Way to go, Brandon.
This is your chance to pay him back.
Nicely done.
Thank you. Would you like to say a couple of words? Well, my family, my wife Christina, my son Blake, my daughter Ava, my mother Becky, this is a great honor for me. This is a great city, obviously. I'm a resident of Andalia. I'd like to thank city staff, Dan, Kirk, for this opportunity. City staff, we're looking forward and we're looking forward to hearing in the future, and just hopefully, long-standing years through just my last stop in my journey, my career, and hopefully it's a good one. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like, and congratulations, Lieutenant. Next, I'd like to, as part of the communications, introduce Public Safety Specialist Mary Beth Dyke, and Chief Oldhouse has a little bit of an introduction to do. Welcome. And I will say, she was in her corporate challenge right when she started. Heck of a volleyball player. We need her every year.
It's always good to have someone new in our corporate challenge. So, it's my honor to introduce one of our newest public safety specialists. As you're well aware, our public safety specialists play a big role here in the city and for the police department, as they're the ones who staff our communications center, they answer our 911 calls or the non-emergency calls when our residents call in with a concern. So, it's my honor to interview Mary Beth Dyke tonight. She began with the city back on May 12th, and she came to us from Miami Valley Hospital, where she was serving as a police officer there with the hospital campus. She graduated from Ripley Union Lewis Huntington High School in 2010. It's a long name of a high school. She earned her Associate's Degree in Criminal Justice from Sinclair Community College in 2016, and she also graduated from Sinclair Community College Basic Peace Officer Training Academy in 2015. Currently resides in Centerville, and we're glad to have her part of our team, so we just wanted to introduce her tonight and welcome her aboard, so. Thank you for being here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a proclamation, B-City USA. If Mr. Dranshak and Mr. Tubbell would come up.
About a year ago.
We prepared a proclamation for you. What I'd like to do is go ahead and read it. Whereas pollinators, to include thousands of species of bees, are essential partners in producing much of our food and supplies. Whereas, pollinators provide significant environmental benefits necessary for maintaining healthy, biodiverse urban and suburban ecosystems. And whereas, pollination plays a vital role in the health and the trees, the plants of our community, enhancing the equality of life and creating recreational and economic development opportunities. And whereas, for decades, the City of Andalia has managed urban landscapes and public lands that include many municipal parks and greenways, and well as wildlife habitats. And whereas, the City of Andalia provides recommendation to developers, residents regarding landscaping, to promote wise conservation and stewardships, including protection of pollinators and maintenance of their habitats in urban and suburban environments. Now therefore, I, Richard Herbst, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Andalia, do hereby proclaim the week of June 21st, 2021 Pollinator Week in the City of Andalia, and in accordance with our B-City USA affiliation, call upon all of our citizens to support the mission of this worthwhile organization. We appreciate it. Thank you. Saying anything?
Thank you.
Al is one of the committee, and Al's a certified beekeeper. Mary Geiger, who didn't want to come up, is a master gardener, and she's part of our committee, and I do grounds maintenance. And we've been doing this for, I think this is our sixth year now. So, thank you very much, and we have a program with the Parks and Rec. Al's going to do a 45-minute presentation to the youth group July the 1st. We'll tack it on to the week, and I'm going to take half of the group and give them a tour of the society, and then we're going to switch groups and do the same thing over. So, first time we've had a rec center program. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
I'd just like to invite everybody to come out to Summer Fest on Wednesdays. Joe and I'll be out there representing the Storm Society and B-City USA, so we'll have materials about the bees and stuff.
Okay. Awesome.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item, we have no public hearing tonight, and that brings us to comments from interested citizens. So, if anyone would like to make a comment tonight, please step to the podium, state your name and address for our record, and your comment.
Hi, this is Holly Wiggins at 660 Castle Creek. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
I am speaking on behalf of AES Ohio, which was Dayton Power and Light, and remember this month, your bills, whether you get them in paper or email form, should say AES Ohio. Please don't throw those out. They are, in fact, a correct bill. The other thing I'd like to say is thank the community for the cooperation and watching out for our crews that have been working diligently on restoration. The storm impacted 33,500 customers. We had winds in excess of 60 miles an hour, hail, flash flooding, and two confirmed tornadoes that touched down. All the while, there were people out there working, restoring power during these storms. We had more than half of the restorations done by Saturday, late afternoon, 98% were in by Sunday. So, there's a few more things still being worked on, some isolated outages in Clinton County where there was severe damage. So, I really just want to thank the community and folks watching out, because it can be a dangerous job out there, and you've just got to watch for those folks working. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Wiggins.
Mayor, real quick, I just wanted to express appreciation to Ms. Wiggins. I think it was last week, prior to the storms, I had a couple of residents in the Wilhelmina Ronald neighborhood that were experiencing repeated power surges throughout repetitive days. So, I reached out to Ms. Wiggins, and she was able to get an answer and respond back pretty quickly, and hopefully that problem's been resolved. But, just take this chance or opportunity to thank her, but also to encourage residents, you know, expressing frustration, everything on social media is fine, but that doesn't help get the problem resolved with the company. So, make sure you go to their website and report those outages to them or those power blips, because that's the only way they're going to know that those are occurring on a regular basis. So, you can do that by telephone or on their website.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Well said.
Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment? Come on up.
How are you doing tonight? My name is David Marble. I own Northern Light Upfitting.
Your address?
I'm at 114 North Main Street in Union, Ohio. I am one of the two bids that were submitted for your police cruiser outfit package. I just wanted to introduce myself to the council and to Vandalia. I'm a new business, we're a veteran-owned, family-owned. What I went out to do was start a company that took everything good that I have learned over my 15 years of experience, and be able to build something that I could pass on to my kids, and hopefully serve the surrounding communities. So, I'm really excited to be able to offer a bid package for you guys. My boys go to the daycare here in Vandalia over at We Care, and we spend a lot of time here. We live right over in Union. We're not five minutes away from you. So, we're a small business. That means low overhead, and that is why my bid is as low as it is. I'm able to take those savings and pass them on to my customers, which is my whole goal, is to get you guys into a good cruiser at a great price. I do not have history with my business, because it is so new, but I have worked and built many vehicles, police vehicles, through other local upfitting businesses that I worked at, including I built Riverside's two cars last year, Claremont County Sheriff's, their first fleet of the 2020 cars. I built all 10 of those. And Perry Township has, over the course of, I believe, two years, outfitted four cars, and then to include many, many more that I could list if you guys had the time. So, one thing I did want to clarify is, we were not asking for payment upfront, but since we are a small business, we were asking for a payment per cruiser. After I build the cruiser, and you guys and the police chief, you know, he inspects it and says, "Yeah, this is good," then we could go on with payment for each cruiser. So, do that three times. And you will be, oh, and I also actually installed your rear prisoner partition cameras when you guys needed them, I believe, your whole fleet. So, I actually came out to your garage here at the police station, and I was the one who installed all of those for you. So, while you guys would be my first official customer as a department and a city, all that means is I can give you guys 100% of my time and effort and build you guys a great cruiser, and so I just hope you'll consider me, and thank you very much for allowing me to give you guys my bid.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Thanks for coming.
Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment? And I will note that if you're here to speak about the fuel station, once we resume the study session minute, our meeting, and we hear that presentation, we will give everyone a chance to speak on that. Would you like to come up now?
This is Holly Wiggins again. I'd like to comment on something you're considering at Item 14. Should I wait until then, or do you want that done during this session?
She wanted to comment on something?
Ms. Wiggins, this is Dan Went. Can you go ahead and repeat that, and then also, I would just say, if it is on the agenda to be discussed later tonight with regard to the potential rezoning for the truck stop, it would be appropriate to share those comments after counsel has been able to be briefed on them, so.
Perfect. I'll wait.
Okay.
Hi. I don't know if I'm doing this properly or not. I've got a problem at home that has to do with the Foxborough Apartments behind our home. Have I talked to the right folks?
Can you first give your name and address for our?
It's Rick Brunner, 416 Randler.
Okay, thank you.
There's a garbage dumpster right at our backyard, at our fence. I've talked to, tried to talk to the people at Foxborough, and I have no answer. I did speak with the after-hours secretary who answers the phone. She talked to me like she would talk to someone, but I've not heard anything back. The back, I've got some pictures here that really are awful. I don't know, would you like to show them to you? The stuff that's left in back there, stuff piled up against our fence, is just awful. It's horrible for our city, I think, but to me, no one seems to be interested in trying to clean up the problem. I called the folks at Rumkey. I asked them if there's any way they could put stop to the wheels so that the stuff wouldn't roll into the back, and it comes, it's this far away from our fence right now, and it's staying there. They keep putting it back there, and it's just awful.
I, Mr. Brunner?
Yes, sir.
I will go ahead. I will figure out who spoke with you, and I have the pictures, and you live at 416 Randler?
Yes.
And this is related to Foxborough, right immediately behind your house?
Yes. It's the very rear building. It's right beside the back of Bo Townsend.
I will request that Assistant City Manager Amber Holloway get your phone number, so that you don't have to give it out to all these fine people, but that she grab it. She's right here in the gray suit, and she will do that, and I will follow up with you very promptly to see what we can do to work with both the business, the apartment complex, and also the residents, if there's something that we need to do, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brunner.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on any other topics? Okay, we'll move on to the city manager's report, and we have some information items. Mr. Went?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would just like to remind everyone that in accordance with our ordinances, city offices will be closed on Monday, July 5th in observation of Independence Day. The recreation center will close Saturday, July 3rd at 6:00 p.m. and will be closed on Sunday, July 4th, but will be back open Monday. Also, with regard to the Star Spangled Celebration, the City of Andalia will present the Star Spangled Celebration on Saturday, July 3rd, beginning at 7:00 p.m. The event takes place on the soccer fields of the Vandalia Sports Complex. This year, the event is being sponsored by Bo Townsend Ford, Lincoln and Nissan, Joseph Airport Toyota, Scion and Hyundai, Smedley Chevrolet, and Fifth Third Bank, with additional support from Digital Cowboy Computers and Pickrell Schaefer Ebling. Entertainment will be provided by The Blue Leaf. Fireworks will start at 10:00 p.m. In case of rain, the fireworks will be held till Friday, July 9th. With the fireworks, only no entertainment. You'll note that that's the airport, the airshow parade will be done at 8:00 p.m. So, if it rains, the fireworks will happen at 10:00 p.m., and so it'll be a very full, very, very, very full day, but good. And there will be no interruptions, as I've already checked with the airshow board. The other thing is on Wednesday, this Wednesday, 10:30 a.m., MetroNet is having a grand opening. So, we're really excited about the fiber ring that they're putting around the Dayton metro area. That's great for economic development and also our residential internet users. One other thing that I'm going to point out, I received word today that Assistant City Manager Amber Holloway is being appointed to the Ohio City Managers Association Board. There's only like four or five out of all the cities that serve, so that's a pretty big deal. We're pretty happy for her to get onto that board and continue with her professional development, so congratulations, Amber. The summer schedule, council meetings, council's established a summer schedule. The next meeting will be on July 19th at 7:00 p.m., but we'll start the study session at 5:30 p.m. And I think that's, I think that's all I have.
That's all the information items, and we have an action item for boards and commissions for appointments?
Yes. Monday night, you'll be asked to consider the re, well, Monday night, that's today, you'll be asked to reconsider the reappointment of current board and commission members whose terms expire June 30th, 2021. A memo from Mrs. Przynski is attached for your review in Granicus here, and if it's council's desire, the vote can be via acclamation, meaning you can appoint them all at once instead of individually, just in case you want to.
All right. Have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve the boards and commission reappointments by acclamation.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Councilman Blakeslee that we approve the boards and commission reappointments by acclamation. Any comments?
Just appreciate everyone volunteering, and some of those were incumbents, and to do this again, really appreciate all their help, because council looks at these boards and commissions to look at the information given to them and advise us on things, so helps us out very much, so appreciate their help.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. We have no old business, and that brings us to our first resolution of the night, that being Resolution 21-R-34. Mr. McDonald, by title only?
A resolution approving the Foxfire Section 8 final plat.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
The applicant, Bob Crongold, has requested a final plat for Phase 1 of Foxfire Section 8 subdivision and final construction drawings for Section 8 in the future Section 9 of the subdivision. The final plat would subdivide 13.2471 acres of land generally located in the northwest section of the Foxfire subdivision, and dedicate an additional 2.2384 acres of land on Bolton Abbey Lane, Deerhurst Drive, and Poplar Creek Road as public right-of-way. The proposed plat would create 29 buildable, single-family lots. The planning commission voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of the conditions.
Thank you. Have a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 21-R-34.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Ayers and a second by Councilman Blakeslee that we approve Resolution 21-R-34 as presented. Are there any other comments? Call the roll.
Only that, weren't there a couple of conditions that weren't met?
With the four conditions, yeah.
That there were four conditions that had to be met as it related to this?
Yeah, I believe that the resolution itself states in there, there was, two of them were met already, and then one of them was still outstanding, which was, I can't remember, building in the waterway type of thing?
Which would be not a condition proceeding.
And the, right, and the other one was actually dealing with the planning commission, the maintenance of the easement area, but in talking with Rob Cron, right, that already exists, so it's technically not really needed, but it is in the resolution.
Condition subsequent. Very good. Sorry?
I'll just point out that the city is, wants to have a very positive relationship with Mr. Cronold, and it's been very difficult in this area to ensure adequate maintenance of the property with regard to keeping it mowed, keeping things tidy, and so the city staff will continue to work with him, and it's my hope that that performance will improve.
Thank you. Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 21-R-35. Mr. McDonald?
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into contract with Garland DBS, Inc. of Cleveland, Ohio, for the golf course facility's roof replacement project in an amount not to exceed $60,000, being obtained through the Omnia Partners National Cooperative Purchase Program.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
Parks and Recreation Director Clark is recommending a bid award for the Castle Hills Golf Course Facility's Roof Replacement/Repair Project. Garland administered a competitive bid process with the Enterprise Roofing of Dayton, submitting the lowest and best bid of $55,471. The 2021 capital improvement plan had $65,000 appropriated for the project. As part of the project, three roofs on structures at the golf course, the clubhouse, cart barn, and the maintenance building will be replaced or repaired. The clubhouse roof was last replaced in 1994. The golf maintenance building has a metal roof that is original to either 1974 or '75. No one can remember. And the golf cart barn roof is original as well, which is 1985, the same year I was born. Additionally, he advised that it is possible that a portion of the wood decking on both the clubhouse and the cart barn may need replaced as part of the project as well, and will not be determined until the old shingles have been removed during the construction phase. Therefore, Director Clark and I are requesting to award the contract not to exceed $60,000.
Thank you. Do you have a motion?
Your Honor, I move that we approve Resolution 21-R-35 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Lewis and a second by Councilwoman Fairst that we approve Resolution 21-R-35 as presented. Are there any comments?
Just glad that it went when we had it in the budget.
The others?
We didn't have to wait for emergency.
Thank you.
The next item.
Call the roll.
I don't know how an explanation of a golf course facility roof can make me feel old, but somehow it did. John just saying.
I'm really sorry about that.
Okay.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 21-R-36. Mr. McDonald?
Resolution awarding the bid for the resurfacing of various streets requested by the Public Works Department to Barrett Paving Materials, Inc., at the lowest and best bid price of
Mr. Went?
Your Honor, bids were publicly opened for our annual street resurfacing project on Tuesday, May 11th, 2021. I recommend that the bid be awarded to Barrett Paving Materials, Inc., as the lowest and best bidder at the bid price of $582,932.30. The engineer's estimate for the project was $605,000. This project is funded by the Safe and Stable Levy and Street Fund appropriated in the 2021 budget. The project also includes the installation of a concrete median on North Dixie. The project has a completion date of October 1st, 2021.
Thank you. Do you have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Resolution 21-R-36.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Councilman Lewis to approve Resolution 21-R-36 as presented. Resolution 21-R-36 as presented. Are there any comments?
Just one quick comment, and that's it. This year's street list, um, there's only a couple residential areas. I mean, residents probably won't see as much being done in neighborhoods because there's some other large streets like Dixie and up in industrial, or up in, uh, by Krogers and down on Poe Avenue being repaved, so they won't see as much done in residential areas, but it's still being done.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Call the roll.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next we have Resolution 21-R-37. Mr. McDonald?
A resolution to enter into an agreement for stop-loss coverage with Nationwide TMSRE.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
Thank you, Your Honor. The city's health insurance broker, Demorey Benefits Administrators, recently received and reviewed with staff quotes from the stop-loss carriers for the July 1 renewal of the city's self-funded health insurance plan. I'm recommending that the renewal be placed with Nationwide Life Insurance Company/TMSRE, Inc., for stop-loss coverage with a $55,000 specific deductible, um, and the Underwriter Services Corporation as our third-party administrator. To keep up with growing healthcare costs, the healthcare premiums for the traditional preferred provider organization, PPO, will be increased by no more than 7.5%. I'd like to take this opportunity to advise council, uh, that it'll be necessary and that I'll recommend in coming years incremental changes to premiums in plan designs each year to keep up with the market. Uh, I plan to migrate the city's pharmacy benefits manager, the PBM, to true scripts, and I believe that this migration will save the city an estimated $188,707 annually. That's about 40.7%, while expanding the covered formulary, meaning more medications will be covered, um, which is a benefit to the employees. Our analysis shows that no employee will experience a coverage interruption of any currently covered prescription. And then, um, I would like to provide free generic maintenance medications, uh, to employees and covered family members under the new plan at a cost of approximately $15,000 per year. The idea behind this is that over time, when employees take maintenance medications, it prevents more costly healthcare expenditures over the course of an employee's career. So that's my recommendation.
All right. Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Resolution 21-37. Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakeslee and a second by Councilwoman Fairst that we approve Resolution 21-R-37 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next we have Resolution 21-R-38.
A resolution awarding the bid for the Helkey Road Water Main and Road Reconstruction requested by the Public Works Department to Brumbow Construction at the lowest embed- best bid price of $629,487.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
Bids were publicly open for the Helkey, Helkey Road Water Main and Road Reconstruction Project on Thursday, May 27th, and eight contractors submitted bids for the project. Mr. Cron and I are recommending that the bid be awarded to Brumbow Construction as the lowest and best bid at $629,487. The engineer's estimate for the project was $800,000. This project is funded by the Street Fund and Water Fund respectively, and the project has a completion date of December 3rd of this year.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Resolution 21-38. Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakeslee and a second by Councilman Folick that we approve Resolution 21-R-38 as presented. Are there any comments?
I'd like to make one and thank, uh, communications person, Rich Hopkins, for the, he's, okay, who, me? Yes, uh, for the Focus Vandelia on this very subject. And I think they do a great job, and you do a great job, and so does Rob Cron, in explaining the history of this area and why we are doing this. And of course, it's quite obvious, as anybody goes up and down the road, they see all the repairs to the street and dotted lines, and, and I know a number of people in the, in the neighborhood have been asking me, you know, when's this gonna happen, and what's gonna happen, why is it happening, et cetera? So I encourage all those, go to the city website, look for Focus Vandelia, the recent one on the subject, and, uh, that'll be all the explanation. Good job.
Nice animation. All right. Call the roll.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next we have Resolution 21-R-39, by title only.
A resolution declaring the real estate owned by the city and located at 864 Foley Drive a surplus property and authorizing the note, the donation of such property to Habitat for Humanity of Greater Dayton.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
This resolution would approve an agreement between the City of Vandelia and Habitat for Humanity of Greater Dayton. The terms include donating the parcel at 864, uh, Foley Drive to Habitat, who would build a new home consistent with the size and type currently existing that meets all building codes.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 21-R-39 as presented.
Second.
Who's that? I have a motion by Councilwoman Fairst and a second by Vice Mayor Ayers to approve Resolution 21-R-39 as presented. Are there any comments?
I'd like to say that I thought this was just a, a real positive, uh, idea, and I don't know if it did emanate from Mr. Went, but, uh, or Amber, I've no.
No.
Fire Chief Folick. Really?
That was his idea, yeah.
Well, it was, it was a fine idea, and I think it's a great use of the property, and, um, hopefully we can, uh, of similar ilk, uh, within the city, um, and just improve our whole community. So congratulations, that was good work.
Thank you. Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. And lastly, we have Resolution 21-R-40.
And, uh, just a reminder, this was the resolution we talked about earlier with the condition. Um, resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into?
No.
Nope. A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a letter of understanding with the United States Air and Trade Show.
Mr. Went?
Is it okay if I just let the law director's explanation from earlier stand and state that I'll, uh, I'll, I'll go ahead and negotiate that within the confines as described earlier?
Okay. Have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Resolution 21-R-40, subject to the city manager negotiating a new amount in Section 2 to cover the increase in catering costs.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Councilman Blakeslee to approve Resolution 21-R-40, subject to the city manager having the ability to negotiate, uh, the terms. Are there any other comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. We have no ordinances in our first reading, nor do we have any ordinances in our second reading. However, we do have five emergency ordinances, and the first one being Emergency Ordinance 21-12. Mr. McDonald?
Just a reminder, for my first five years, we had to read every single one of these bond ordinances in full before we could go.
We can still request that.
Yeah, we can still request.
We can, but we're not. So as you go through these painful process, just remember, it could be a lot worse, everybody.
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum principal amount of $1,399,000 in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to provide monies for the retirement of the city's outstanding taxable land acquisition notes, Series 2019, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Went?
The land acquisition note issued for acquisition of land at Stone Quarry Crossing Development matures on August 3rd, 2021. The total amount due is $1,399,000 in principal plus $20,926.71% in interest, equivalent to 1.5%. The interest amount included in the, the interest amount was included in the 2021 budget, which was $21,500. The maturity date on the new note will be on July 28th, 2022, with an estimated interest amount due of $25,000. The debt is scheduled to be paid in full in 2036.
Thank you. And since this is an emergency ordinance, I will open up a public hearing. So if anyone would like to make comments on this ordinance, please step to the podium, state your name and address for our record, and your comment. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Ordinance 21-12 as an emergency.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Councilwoman Fairst that we approve Emergency Ordinance 21-12. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
And the motion carries seven zero. Yes, I forgot the vote. All right, next we'll move on to Emergency Ordinance 21-13.
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum principal amount of $1,500,000 in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying the cost of acquiring a fire truck, together with all related appurtenances thereto, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Division of Fire is requesting the purchase of a new ladder truck in preparation for the financing of the new truck and apparatus. Finance is recommending the issuance of bond anticipation notes not to exceed $1.5 million for the cost of the truck and apparatus, and to be combined with the current Fire Engine 2016 Bond Anticipation Notes to save on issuance costs. Because this is a new purchase, the new legislation, a separate ordinance, will be prepared and presented to council for consideration and passage. At the beginning of next year, it'll only be necessary to prepare and to present and to pass one piece of legislation. That includes both the remaining balances of the 2016 and 2021 Bond Anticipation Notes. The maturity on the new note will be August 25th, 2022. The 2016 Bond Anticipation Note debt is scheduled to be paid in full in 2026. The 2021 Bond Anticipation Note debt will be scheduled to be paid in full in 2031.
Thank you. Since this is an emergency ordinance, I'll open a public hearing. So if anyone would like to make comment on this ordinance, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and your comment. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve Ordinance 21-13 as an emergency.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Ayers and a second by Councilman Blakeslee that we approve Emergency Ordinance 21-13. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next we have Emergency Ordinance 21-14.
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum principal amount of $240,000 in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to provide money for the retirement of the city's outstanding various purpose notes, Series 2020, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
The Fire Engine 2016 Bond Anticipation Note issued for the new Fire Engine matures on August 31st, 2021. This note was combined with the refunding of the 1996 Bond Anticipation Notes related to the renovation of the municipal building and construction of the Recreation Center and Justice Center in order to save on the cost of issuance. The total principal amount due is $288,000 plus $4,320, or 1.5% in interest. The 2021 budget includes a paydown amount of $48,000 on the outstanding principal due and an interest payment of $4,500. The maturity on the new note, 200, the 240,000, will be on August 25th, 2022, with an estimated interest amount due of $5,000. The debt is scheduled to be paid off in full in 2026.
Thank you. And since this is an emergency ordinance, I'll open up a public hearing. So if anyone would like to make comment, please step to the podium, state your name and address for our record, and your comment. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve Ordinance 21-14 as an emergency. Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakeslee and a second by Councilman Lewis that we approve Emergency Ordinance 21-14. Are there any comments?
Just my normal comment, that this sounds like, again, that we just spent a bunch of money, but the only new debt that we incurred was for the ladder truck, um, not to exceed 1.5 million. So these other two are just housekeeping of reissuing notes that we have to do every year to pay down the debt.
All right. Thank you. Call the roll.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next we have Emergency Ordinance 21-15.
An ordinance approving individual assessment amounts and directing the finance director or her designee to certify the amounts to the county auditor for collection and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Went?
This emergency ordinance assesses properties for delinquent accounts related to stormwater fees, trash collection, and sewer and water.
Thank you. And since this is an emergency ordinance, I'll open up a public hearing. If anyone would like to make comments, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and your comments. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion? a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Ordinance twenty-one dash fifteen as an emergency.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Folic and a second by Councilman Lewis that we approve Ordinance twenty-one dash fifteen as an emergency. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Folic.
Yes.
Councilmember Farce.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. And our last emergency ordinance of this evening is twenty-one dash sixteen.
An ordinance to revise appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Vandelia, Montgomery County, Ohio, during calendar year ending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-one, and amending ordinance two thousand thirty-six and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Went.
The Department of Finance is requesting the approval of the following supplemental appropriation ordinance for an increase in the general fund in the amount of one-hundred-ninety-nine-thousand-seven-hundred-and-forty-eight. The Street Fund in the amount of five-hundred-and-twenty-thousand, Capital Improvement Fund in the amount of two-hundred-and-nine-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars. Gulf Fund in the amount of eleven-thousand-eight-hundred. Water Fund in the amount of one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand, and Sewer Fund in the amount of two-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand-eight-hundred dollars.
Thank you. Since this is an emergency ordinance, I'll open up a public hearing. If anyone would like to make comment, please step to the podium, state your name and address for our record, and your comment. Being done, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve Ordinance twenty-one dash sixteen as an emergency.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Farce and a second by Councilman Lewis that we approve Ordinance twenty-one dash sixteen as an emergency. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Folic.
Yes.
Councilmember Farce.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next we go on to reports from boards and commissions, and we have a variance request at nine-sixty-three Castle Creek. Mr. Went.
Empire Solar Group LLC has requested a variance to permit roof-mounted solar panels facing the public street at six-ninety-three Castle Creek Drive. The code requires that the roof-mounted solar panels not face a street when not integrated with the surface layer of the roof structure. The applicant is proposing to install twenty solar panels that would face South Brown School Road and fifteen solar panels that would face Castle Creek Drive. The Board of Zoning Appeals voted to recommend approval subject to one
Have you done?
Yes, sir. And I do believe that you may have a resident who is interested in speaking on the matter that's attending remotely.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this variance?
Yes. My name is Brian Haynes. I live at six-seven-six Castle Creek, which is almost directly across the street from the house in question. Personally, I think it's going to be an eyesore. I don't mind if it's on the Brown School side, because it's not residential in any way. But giving a variance is gonna set a precedent throughout the city. It's just, I like the environment, but try to keep the aesthetics of the neighborhood.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
This is Holly Wiggins at six-sixty Castle Creek. I'm diagonally across from that same residence, and I agree with everything Brian just said. It's setting a precedence that could be throughout the community and in the center of residential plats. It's just not going to be very aesthetic for the city to have solar on both sides and on the streets. And I just would like to see it not allowed. I agree with it being on the backside. There's trees back there, and it's not residential on the other side. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment?
Yes. This is Chris Butterball. I live two doors down. I agree with both the previous speakers. The backside, no problem with. The front side, it's also gonna be visible to anyone coming up the street, leaving the area. Just would be an eyesore. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to comment? Okay. Do I have a motion?
I move that we deny the variance request on sixty-nine-sixty-three Castle Creek Drive by Empire Solar Group LLC.
Have a motion by Vice Mayor Ayers and a second by Councilman Folic to deny the variance for solar panels at nine-sixty-three Castle Creek, Castle Creek Drive.
Six-ninety-three.
Excuse me, six, no, nine-sixty-three.
Right.
Any other comments?
I would've been more inclined if the variance was just for the rear, because Brown School's a pretty heavily-trafficked road. But since the variance is inclusive of both sides, I'm definitely will vote no.
We have the option of taking staff's recommendation, which is the side-facing Brown School with their, with their two recommendations, which is, you know, it's, nothing shall face Castle Creek and all the wires and associated apparatus related to the solar energy system shall be installed below the roof line and not visible from Castle Creek Drive. So...
I don't know. I'm inclined to deny the variance, though, at this point, in so much as the fifteen and the twenty might be not enough to power, so the configuration would change.
And I'm just going off of what was in the minutes from the BZA, was the applicant had said if both sides were not awarded, that he would not proceed with the project, because it wasn't gonna make financial sense for him or her.
And although I agree that this is something green for the environment, I'm not sure that this type of variance applies. If it was somewhere other than a platted area, perhaps, but I'm not sure that it would fit this. And I do understand the applicant's situation. We're trying to offset that cost as part of going green, but I also respect our code as well.
Thank you. Call the roll.
And just to remind council, a yes vote means to deny the variance.
Correct.
Okay. Councilmember Farce.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Folic.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries.
The motion to deny.
The motion to deny carries seven zero. Next, we have the Planning Commission meeting minutes of May eleventh. Any comments on those? Being done, they stand approved. And next, we have the April bill listing in the amount of two-million-ninety-nine-thousand-sixty-eight dollars and forty-four cents, and the May bill listing in the amount of two-million-five-hundred-and-four-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents, and also the May purchase card detail in the amount of forty-nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars and eighty-seven cents. That brings us to council comments. We'll start with Mr. McDonald. Thank you. Mr. Went.
Nothing at this time, Your Honor.
Councilwoman Woods.
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Lewis.
No, thank you, Your Honor.
Councilman Folic.
Just two or three real quick things. First of all, I attended the first employee appreciation ice cream social last Wednesday or Thursday. So, I just think it's great that staff has started those programs again and got city employees back out after COVID and a year and a half of restrictions. So, that was nice to see. Congratulations to the Parks and Recreation staff on yet another successful corporate challenge, I think thirty-second annual. And I just wanted to comment, as in, you know, in Parks and Recreation, Parks and Rec deals with a lot of fads and trends, and you'll see cities jump on the, a fad, and, you know, three or four years later, it kind of fizzles out, and that program's gone and moves on. And I think back in the nineties, we saw a lot of communities have battled the businesses, or, you know, ours was corporate challenge. And I just think it's a true testament to our Parks and Rec staff that this program has endured thirty-two years. I think it's important to the business community, especially this year. I think after last year got canceled because of COVID, that them coming back out and participating in that program. So, it's a true testament to Steve and his staff for keeping that program fresh and going on every year. And then I tried to find it again before tonight's meeting, and I couldn't find it, but I know I read it somewhere. I just want to recognize and thank Judge Heck and his court staff for obtaining a grant through the Supreme Court to pay for the new x-ray and security equipment at the court. That was, that was a project that was budgeted in the capital item, or capital budget for the year, I think it was thirty-five-thousand dollars was budgeted. So, by them going out and finding that grant, that's expenses that, you know, we can save that taxpayer money and not have to use that for that project. So, I appreciate the court staff doing that. That's it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Farce?
Just on the corporate challenge, I think somehow we have to figure out how to publicize Rich's daily recap of what goes on, because I think our citizens would enjoy it as much as we do. So, thank you. Also, thank you, everybody. I know you came to talk to us. Our workshop was broken in half by our meeting, but thank you for sticking around. And hopefully you'll come up and give us your opinions on whatever you hear about. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Blakesley?
Just a couple of things. Welcome Lieutenant Zucker. I know that his father be proud of him, and it's neat to see the legacy. And I think he's gonna definitely contribute to the city, and I know his heart's into it, and he'll be a fine addition to the Vandelia family. And thanks to Senator Itani, and I appreciate him coming tonight, and also having Mayor and Mr. Went talk to him previous to that, to tonight's meeting, in that, explain our situation, how critical it is. And so, I think, as you heard him say, one of the things that probably need to go is that legislate, legislation, legislation route. And I know we've been frustrated over the years as to what can we do. And I think we're to that point now. We've got ears listening, finally. So, I am encouraged by that. And thanks to the city for placing forth in the corporate challenge. I know it was tough to get people to get in there and do that, but I agree with Councilwoman Farce that Rich's topics, or the way you describe it, reads like a good book. So, I think that would be, need to put maybe out there somehow. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ayers.
Yes, I'd like to shout out and congratulations to the Vandelia Butler High School baseball team. They made it to the regionals, just played at the Dayton Dragons Field. They won the first game, so they made it to the regional finals, and unfortunately fell a little short, got beat in extra innings. But even with that said, it was an outstanding season for the high school team. So, kudos to them.
All right, thank you. And I have no comments. So, at this time, we're going to resume our normal study session, and then afterwards, we'll go into executive session. And then after that, we will resume our council meeting and then adjourn. And Gary's telling me no, Dan's saying no.
No, we're gonna end this meeting.
We're gonna end this meeting.
The regular meeting will be over. We will go back into the study session. And then at the end of the study session, if council desires to go into the executive session, then we will do so as part of the study session.
Here, close.
Yeah. How is that any different than what I said? Legally.